Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the role, please.
Councilmember Flanagan.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Present.
Merrinda.
Present.
Steenstra.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Present.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Councilmember Steenstra has been, has asked to be excused tonight. He's not feeling well. Is there a motion for excuse to?
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor of excusing him, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Brandon Hahn from Ivan Rest Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that with a touch of faith.
All right, let's pray. Lord God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we come before you tonight with gratitude and thanksgiving in our hearts. It's especially fitting with the Thanksgiving holiday later this week. And we're specifically thankful tonight, Lord, for our town, the city that we get to live in, Granville. We pray for this meeting of our city council, and we just pray that the decisions that are made tonight would honor and glorify you. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Well, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So, support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes. Yes. In the opposition, please say no. Great. We also have the minutes from the November 10 meeting that Councilmember Merrinda shared. You've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes from November 10's meeting? Attention, this is her.
No, I'll just highlight if I can. We did have a couple councilmembers highlight a correction regarding who made a motion and who made a second in the minute. So we did put a corrected version on the dais for everybody. So just in case anyone is looking at which one we're looking to approve, it would be the corrected version with the strike through of the two names. Just appreciate those who brought that to our attention.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, November 10, 2025, as corrected?
Motion.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. Thank you. Presentation of bills. Let's see, another hefty amount, 1.6 million approximately, so helps about it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, after last meeting where we had a below-average amount, no surprise that this meeting we have an above-average amount of checks looking for approval from the council. I do have a handful that I would like to highlight, and as normal, if there are questions about any others, I'm happy to do the best I can to try to answer those. I'm going to start with invoicing the amount of $33,693 from vendor named Axes and Irons. This was the turnout gear for the fire department that was approved on September 8th. We have Axon Enterprise, Inc. in the amount of $24,137. These are the annual licenses for the body cams used by the police department. We have an invoice in the amount of $2,965 to DK Security. This is the private security that's hired for the polling places to help make sure that everyone's comfortable going to the elections. We have Aetna Supply, a large invoice, $466,550. This is the supply for the meter replacement project that will be taking place this spring. That is about 3,000 meters that we've ordered. We have a game time in the amount of $51,367. This is the new park equipment or playground equipment for the Mill Rice Park project. If you actually look in more of the detail, the total amount of that was, I think, closer to $71,000, but we get a chunk of that paid for by an invoice, or excuse me, by a grant. So we end up just paying the amount listed there. Lads U.S. Golf Cart Company in the amount of just over $10,000. This is the utility golf cart that was purchased for the cemetery, approved back on September 22nd. Lee's Trenching Service in the amount of $32,545. This is the combination of a hydrant replacement on 44th Street, as well as the assistance necessary for the Ponderosa Wentworth water main repair a handful of weeks ago that we talked about, the one that was pretty tough because of where it was located by Buck Creek. We needed some help with the de-watering so we could cap that water main and maintain the pressure. Two vendors, Polydine, Inc. and Tidewater Products, Inc., one in the amount of $26,000, the other in the amount of $62,000. These are both clean water plant process chemicals. I don't highlight these a lot. You'll see different vendors quite regularly with large amounts, but just kind of highlight every so often how expensive some of the chemicals we are and how important it is to make sure we're maintaining those in safe, dry, and appropriate locations at the clean water plant, just because those chemicals are not cheap, but very necessary for the processes we conduct there. And then lastly, an invoice for Royal Truck and Utility Trailer in the amount of $6,270. This was the plow for the new dump truck that was approved back on October 27th. So plenty of others on the list this time. As we saw, it is an above-average amount, but lots of things happening in town and happy to answer questions.
Questions for Griffin on any of the bills tonight? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $1,688.48?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Flanagan.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Well, tonight we also have our annual audit report, and again, bringing good news, from what I understand, and from what I've read, so welcome.
Thank you very much. Doug Bredewell with Bredewell Hefner, and here to present your audit once again. We just got it done, probably last week, I don't know, but got it issued and ready to upload it to the state pending this approval tonight, so. Just wanted to first say thank you to Jane for all the work she put into it. We did lots of editing this year to the statements to make it more closely aligned with what you see in your budget report, so hopefully, if you try to compare it, you'll notice that. But if you go first to page one, this is where our opinion on the financial statements are, is. Second paragraph says, "In our opinion, the statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city." So that's a good, unmodified, clean report, which you hope for. "In addition to that, we expand the scope of our procedures a little bit to cover," it's called government auditing standards, "to issue a report on your internal control and compliance at the financial statement level." That report is found way in the back on page 67. "If there were any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses within the government, or in the city, rather, we would report those there, and there are none to report." So that's also a good report. So if I say nothing else tonight, it's all good. But I won't. I'll keep going. So page five, this is your management, discussion, and analysis. This is primarily prepared by management. I just wanted to point out a couple of the financial highlights right at the top of page five. A lot of things that occurred throughout the year at the city. This is for the year into June 30, 25. So just more clean water projects. Seven vehicles were added, completed the Ivan Rest and 36th Street water main, six major street projects, completed the fire station roof project at $1.4 million nearly, so just a lot of projects there. And I'll let you peruse the rest of that. So pages, I'd like to go right to the statements on pages 11 through 13. There's actually two sets of statements within this bound copy. The first set is called the full accrual basis financial statements, and that's page 11 through 13. This includes your capital assets, your long-term debt, your pension, and OPEB liabilities, so all those really long-term type assets and liabilities. But you can see the bottom of page 11, you have unrestricted net position of 4.1 million, and that's good, that's positive. There's many, many local units of government that have a negative net position there because of the pension liabilities and so forth. Your pension liability at the end of the year was about 5.8 million, so that's the defined benefit pension plan. That's money owed to past employees and some current employees. And then I just have a couple slides here. I'll get them there after. There we go. So the income statement on the full accrual basis, this is just a pie chart that shows where the revenue comes from. You can see 58% of it's coming from property taxes, 19% from various operating grants. That includes your Act 51 street money that you receive for street work, and then 11% from the state for state shared revenue. So very similar to the previous years. And this is a picture that just shows your expenses and program or direct revenues of your governmental activities. So you have various activities within the government, and they get broken down into expenses and programs here. The program revenues are direct revenues directly affiliated with those various functions. So the difference here, the blue, you can see the expense exceeds the program revenues in every case, and that difference is made up by the property taxes and state shared revenues, which are called general revenues. So public works, they look like they're doing really well. A lot of work that's done with public works is capitalized rather than expensed, so that drives the blue bar down there. And then they have the street money, which is used for those capital expenses, showing as revenue. So that's why that one looks, looks really well-funded there. But it'll be depreciated over time. And then just the fund basis financial statements. These are more of a current financial resources focus. Don't have all the long-term stuff in here, and that's on pages 14 through 17. So just the general fund is the left-hand column on page 14. You can see there the unassigned fund balance there is 4 million, and there's also an assigned amount for next year's budget of 1.5 million. That's to make up next year's, make up for the excess of expenditures over revenues on next year's budget, so that amount gets assigned or set aside for next year. If you just flip quick to page 16, that's the income statements for all these other funds. Again, the general fund, you can see the net change in fund balance was a decrease of about 600,000, which is the third line up from the bottom. The major streets ended up with a positive, just over a million dollars. That's because one of the projects, one of the major street projects that was going to start in the previous fiscal year was delayed until '25, '26, so it just didn't get started on time. So the revenue's there, but they didn't get expensed. Yet, they will be this year. And then if you also, as I walk through these slides on the general fund, you probably want to, page 55 and 56 is the budget to actual, so that's a little easier way to see the general fund. You can kind of see on the page 56, right near the bottom, I mentioned, so there's a decrease of 600,000 in the general fund for the year. That's primarily due to transferring out a lot of money into the street projects. 2.6 million was transferred over to the street funds, which will be used for streets upcoming. And you can see it was budgeted, the second column from the left there, to lose 2.2 million, and you decreased 600, so you actually finished about a million and a half ahead of what you had budgeted. So that's very, very good outcomes for the year. And then just by way of the revenues in the general fund up on the slides, you can see there the taxes are up this year. There was increases in taxable value as well as the additional 1.5 mils that was levied for the year, so you can see the jumps that that took. And then state shared revenue is down. That is primarily, there was some make-up money paid in the previous fiscal year in '24. The level that it is for '25 is the level it will pretty much stay at for future years, unless you have a huge population change. And then other, you can see that has not changed. That's your other revenues, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, that kind of thing. And then this is your, just your general fund again, the expenditures by function or by area. I gotta go to my notes for this one. Okay, so you can see the last couple of years, the general government has been really high compared to previous fiscal years. In the last two years, you've done a lot of capital projects, so the capital outlay is what's really driving that up with building projects and so forth. This year, the fire station roof is in there, for example. And also, the public safety is up a little bit from the last couple of years. There have been fire trucks purchased the last couple of years, so that drives that number up. And then the transfers out, I mentioned, the general fund with that new millage levy transferred a lot of money over to the street funds, so that's why the transfer out is up significantly. And I did look, oh, the recreation, you can see, dropped last year. In '24, there was recreation money that was, ARPA money that was spent on park expansion, and this year that didn't occur again, so that's down back to a more normal level. And this is your general fund fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers, so all, all your expenses and transfers compared to the unassigned fund balance. You can see it was way up to nearly 60% a few years ago. It's been, by budget and plan and design, it's been coming down to a more reasonable 32% this year, still ahead of what your policy is, but in real good shape. Our kind of rule of thumb is to keep three months' worth in fund balance, which is 25%. So still looking very good in the general fund. And this is just a little longer historical look at your property tax revenues. You can see it's, it's been all increases in taxable value until this year, when it took the jump from the added millage. Okay, then, in addition, on pages 18 and 20, this is your proprietary fund financial statements. So water and sewer funds. Lot of work done in those funds over the last several years, as everyone knows. If we go to page 19, that's the income statement. Let's kind of focus on there. If you look right in the middle of page 19, you can see here the, the green bar jumped way up from what it was in '23 and '24, and that's due to two big things. This includes all of your revenues. There's a capital contribution, which was the amount received from Otto County for the sewer plant. This is just the sewer fund. And then there was also a green energy credit amount received, the $3.7 million, which drove that revenue side way up. Those are actually reinvested back into capital, so it doesn't affect the operations. But if you look on page 19, right about a third, a third of the way down the page, you can see your operating income and loss there, and there is actually an operating loss for the sewer fund of 1.6 million. So that's a decrease based strictly on operations, and without those credits, the fund would be in a loss position this year as well. For the water fund, for the water fund, that same number was a positive 900,000 this year, so that's, that's very good. There wasn't a lot of capital contributions or anything else in that one, in the water fund this year, so the water fund actually came out ahead and looked pretty good. And oh, your pension and OPEB, just the funding status of those is found on page 50 and 52. I'm sorry, OPEB means Other Post-Employment Benefits Plan. So the pension plan on page 50, we have to show 10 years of information here, so 2024 is the far-right column, which was the most recent actuarial valuation completed. And you can see you're at 65% funded, which is the third line up from the bottom. And the OPEB two pages over, that one is 92% funded, that right-hand column there. So they're both, I think 65% is what the state looks for, so you're right at 65%, and in good shape there. Just by way of footnotes, on page 31, there's footnote two. Footnotes just further explain some of the information that's in the body of the financial statements, but there are some, right at the top of page 31 is the rest of footnote two. There's just some minor budget overages that get reported there, nothing that the state will get too excited about. And then page 15, or I'm sorry, note 15 on page 46, subsequent to year-end, we have to, if we are aware of anything that is occurring after year-end, we have to disclose that, and right after year-end, there was a $9.8 million bond was issued, so we're just disclosing that in these financial statements as well. Any questions I can answer? That's all I got, or that's all I would.
Just one observation.
Sure.
And I don't know, maybe it's a, or kind of a question to you, so Doug, I don't know whether it's for you or for Jane.
Sure.
So our fund balance, our policy is 15%, and we're at 32%, so that's good, and we're purposely spending down that. And I looked through this over the weekend, and it looked like we had been planning on spending about $2.1 million, and we only ended up spending about 500,000 or 600,000, so I think that's a testament to everybody who works for the city of Granville and the stewardship that they show in, in our funds and the integrity that they have, because it was authorized, they could have spent it, but they...
Yeah.
Am I looking at that right?
Yes, and if you look at pages 55 and 56, that's the detail of the budgets, and I, I was going through it, and so what is the big thing that really changed that affected that? And you can see there's not really one or two big items that caused that, that 1.5 million difference, so it's almost every department across the board.
Which I think is a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
It shows that everybody's working.
Yeah, yeah. Normally, if you have a big deficit or a big change like that, you're looking for one or two things, but it really isn't here, so that's great. Everybody's watching.
Thanks. Council questions for Doug or Jane about any of the financial statements? If not, is there a motion to accept that financial statements as presented? So, motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussions, questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merrinda.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Great. Good news again.
Thank you very much.
All right, time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council, just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you think about tonight? See, we've got quite a few guests tonight. Anybody? Church members? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the election of mayor pro temp. It's something that happens every two years after the election. Councilmember Vanderwall is currently serving as mayor pro temp. Griffin, anything you want to add or David about the procedure and how we typically do this, or should do this?
Yeah, sure. Charter provides that there is to be a mayor pro temp elected now that the new council is seated, and so the charter requires that be done by written ballot. It also requires a vote of majority of those announced now in office, so four out of seven are required, not just a majority of the quorum. And so, you know, I think process-wise, probably see if anybody wants to serve or more than, more than one, maybe a vote to, to accept those nominations or make those nominations, and then vote on the, on the written ballot. Marcy will have to give us the results, because we can't take secret ballots under the openings act, the results of number of votes, and then if there need a, we don't have somebody with four votes and we need to do another vote, then that would be the process, I guess, depending on how many people we have interested, we can see if we need any more detail than that.
Okay. Good. I think what we've normally done is taken nominations and then we do the voting. Marcy, of course, does great job on facilitating, just like she did on the last election. So we'll open it up for nominations for mayor pro temp. I nominate JR Vanderwall to continue serving as mayor pro temp. Is there support for that?
Support.
Any other nominations? Okay, saying none, we'll go ahead and put, we have a motion and support for JR Vanderwall. So let's do round one. And we'll, let's see, so we circle.
So the, the vote on the, do we get a vote on the, on the nomination, or vote on the, excuse me, a motion to nominate, and I guess we don't have a vote on that, or just...
We just have one, and also some of the nominations.
That's fine.
Okay.
Jason Flanagan, one vote for JR Vanderwall. Councilwoman Randy Gelderlos, one vote for JR Vanderwall. Councilmember Merrinda, one vote for JR Vanderwall. Councilmember Mike Sullivan, one vote for JR Vanderwall. Councilmember JR Vanderwall, one vote for JR Vanderwall. And Mayor Steve Mas, one vote for JR Vanderwall.
Thanks for being alone and serving again. Appreciate that.
Thanks for the invitation.
The next item is the consent agenda, and approval would be in the best interest of the city, I believe, because of the disposition of some vehicles and property. So we have the reports from EMS Fire Investment and the Troy Service Report, all from October. We have the Historical Commission October Minutes, the Environmental Sustainability Committee Minutes from October, and the DDA Minutes from their November 13 meeting. And we also have the appointment of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and that is Carol Weidman, and that's for a partial term expiring at the end of next year, 12/31/26. We also have council meeting change rescheduled from December 22 to December 15. We also have a resolution of meeting dates for the city council, and I see some are in there, strategic planning and so on. We'll probably have some budget meetings in there as well. And then we also have equipment disposal, and I believe that Charlie's done some memos on that. It's a snowplow, a sidewalk plow, an Ford Explorer, a Dodge van, and Chevrolet Silverado. And how are you disposing of those, again?
They're on a, mean, range of initiatives.
Okay. And that's for like a one-month period?
It's like two weeks.
Oh, okay, so it's quite a while.
Right.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the role on that, please?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merrinda.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas. And Mayor Mas.
City managers report a few things.
Yes, thank you. First item I have for you all this evening is regarding to a memo in the packet from the Department of Public Works, seeking to hire Scott Civil Engineering for Bridge Design Services. As many of you are aware, in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, we are planning four major bridge repair projects. One of those on Chicago Drive is a grant-funded project, and then three others we would be seeking to do at the same time. So as our team has started to hear me call it, next year is bridge year. And while we originally planned to include the design work as part of the upcoming year budget process, expecting that we could do the design work, go out to bid, and start construction within the fiscal year, after getting the proposals from Scott Civil Engineering, they are expecting the design work to take approximately twelve months. So to avoid any delay on the bridge year projects, we are seeking to start the design process this year. It would then wrap up approximately a year from now. That would then give us time to still bid and start construction within fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. There is some funding available in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, but as we were not anticipating doing all of this work this fiscal year, there would be a budget amendment required at the end of the year if we don't want to push any already budgeted projects. There is the funding available in the Major Streets Fund, as this work was planned, just not until next fiscal year. And ultimately, we are recommending that the council consider authorizing the Bridge Design Service proposals from Scott Civil Engineering in the best interest of the city of Granville. My understanding is Scott Civil Engineering is a bridge specialist who was originally recommended to us by the city engineer, Morin Bridge Inc., and that they have been conducting our bridge inspections for a number of years. If there are any other questions, I know Charlie or I would be happy to do the best we can to try to approve though, or excuse me, explain those. The one note I do want to make, though, is the one that is crucial for you all to consider tonight is the Chicago Drive Bridge proposal. Because there's a grant award tied to that project, and that grant award is expected to come in in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, we really can't delay starting the design work, or we would theoretically put that grant reward or award at risk. So that one really is a time of the essence approval. If there is others that you all would like to consider waiting on, you all would have that right. But we do think there will be some eventual savings in looking to bid out all of these projects together, which is why we're trying to line them all up for the same fiscal year. The other question that Charlie noted in his memo that you all may be wondering, and I know I did when I saw the proposals, is why is the proposal for one bridge so much more than the proposals for doing three bridges? And the reason for that is because the Chicago Drive Bridge is going to be receiving an MDOT grant award. It has to get bid out under MDOT specs, and MDOT has requirements that are above and beyond what we would traditionally do, so that that design project requires some additional work to be conducted than the other three bridges. How'd I do, Charlie? Did, does that make some sense? Okay. So that is what I understand right now, and we would be happy to do the best we can to answer any questions.
Got a question for Charlie. If you could just help refresh my memory, I remember a few years ago, we were talking about doing bridges in the road. A lot of bridges, and it was just like this tremendous amount of money. So my sense is that things aren't as bad as we thought maybe with the bridges, so...
The Chicago Drive Bridge, when we first started looking at it, it was complete reconstructing. Cost was like four-and-a-half million dollars. I went to the state bridge authority, Lansing, didn't get any money, but I then had Robert from Scott Civil Engineering and Wayne Harrow from the County Road Commission, who's a bridge expert, we looked at it. Thought, we don't have to reconstruct, we can just, we did a temporary thing, if you remember, about a year ago. So that cost for that bridge now is about one-point-five million. And we're awarded one-point-one million through the local bridge authority. So that came way down. And the other three bridges that we'll have to do work on, we are under like six-hundred thousand. So under a million dollars of our money, we can have four bridges that give you another thirty years of life to live.
Because I remember when I first heard about it, I thought it was kind of dire news, so it sounds a lot better.
Yes, not as bad as I thought.
And one of the reasons for that, too, and again, I give the Department of Public Works a lot of credit, you know, our bridges are already at a point where they have, most of them have weight restrictions on them. That's kind of one of the first steps we get into when you start to notice certain cracking and certain wear. But bridges, very much like roads, are one of those assets that, when they get to a certain point and you invest in some repair and some maintenance, instead of letting them get all the way to the point where they need replacement, you're going to get more value for your money. So again, by investing what is still a very substantial amount, we're going to be able to get these bridges to where, hopefully, none of us at this dais have to think about them again for decades.
The other, ready?
Sure, and the audit, it was brought up that under Major Streets, page sixteen, that we've got about a million fifty thousand in some change for a delayed project. What project is that?
Forty-fourth Street was one of them. Out on Rivertown, that project was originally budgeted to start in twenty-four, twenty-five, so that got completely pushed to the next year. And then that was six-hundred thousand, five-hundred thousand?
Yeah, actually, about three-hundred thousand, three-hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
So not quite half a million of that. One million that you're seeing in there is earmarked for that. And then the Kenowa Street project didn't wrap, and so...
It finished in?
It finished in twenty-five, twenty-six. So a huge chunk of the construction that we had anticipated finishing in twenty-four, twenty-five didn't wrap up until twenty-five, twenty-six. So that was another fairly large chunk. And then we were also carrying, trying to carry some balance in that fund balance for our bridge year.
Okay. And will that number affect the fund balance, or the percentage that we have going forward? If you was stated, where we have thirty-two percent?
In the general fund?
Yeah, does that have to come, that does not have to come out of that?
No, they're different funds, so the fund balances will weaken differently.
Okay. But it'll lower the street fund?
Say that again?
But it'll lower the percentage of the Major Street Fund?
That's correct.
Until next fiscal year where we plan?
Correct, yeah. And we focus, when we talk about fund balance, we tend to focus on the general fund, as many of you will know, because that's our annual operating fund. The streets funds tend to be more project-based, so you will see much more significant fluctuation in the fund balance for those.
Question?
Thank you.
As part of the design, will they be looking at pedestrian access improvements?
I don't think so. I can have them look at that, but that wasn't it, this is more structural than pedestrian. And the one on Chicago Drive is horrible. A few years ago, we looked at it, how can we make a sidewalk there? You'd almost have to extend the bridge out this way and make it, so, and you're talking a lot more money later than that.
My understanding is that we're looking at maintaining the bridges in the same general condition they are now, that at least the projects we've been talking about have not looked at making major changes to the design in terms of sidewalk width and so on and so forth. We could do that, it would just change the scope of the project.
Yeah, I mean, none of them are great, right? The Chicago Drive one is, one side there's a wall, and the way right on the other side is grass where people are.
Yeah, the best ones are Canal and Wallis, and aren't bad. What's the fourth one on here? Is it Iverson?
Iverson, you can walk.
Okay, I haven't walked that one personally, but yeah, the Chicago Drive one is by far the worst for pedestrian crossings, that we have just found, not only is it just a difficult location in town, but the design of that bridge that was put in, whenever it was put in, doesn't give us a lot of flexibility.
I think Derby's been interesting.
I think it is.
So I think Derby's been interesting.
Well, when I mentioned the four-and-a-half million dollars before, that was probably part, that was part of that extending that for a walkway through there.
We should hear options from a designer, and the possibility, we put a lot of work in, planning commission, building out walkability in the city. And here's where we could do what we're encouraging everyone else in the city to do.
Any other comments, questions? Is that something they could do, take a look at that, just kind of?
I can have them look at it, you know, I mean, it's going to cost you more money, but we can have them look at it. But you're getting it to like, yeah, kind of reconstructing, taking that, which would be the south side of that bridge, and completely putting another walkway in there, wood concrete, and whatever you're going out that way. I don't know the exact expense, but...
Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily need to be built to the standard of the bridge, right? We could have something adjacent, similar, oh, we have a canal that's just for pedestrian, just an idea.
That's a thought, which we can look, we could do anytime, really. We take, say, like a canal alongside the bridge, you made a little walkway through there. And we can, I can have them, we can do that as a separate thing, and sometimes we'll then apply it to that.
Okay, any other questions for Griffin on the proposal? And the proposal is to award bridge design work to Scott Civil Engineering in a total amount of one-hundred-and-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Sixty-five thousand-two-fifty was for the Chicago Drive Bridge, and forty-one thousand total for the other three bridges. And like you mentioned, the whole amount has not been budgeted, but you can do a budget, and I don't think that. So is there a motion to approve entering into a contract with Scott Civil Engineering in the amount of one-hundred-and-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars total, maybe two points total, in the best interest of the city?
Is it to authorize city manager to negotiate, and then enter to the control?
We have signed my proposals.
Okay, sign the proposals, yeah. Good, let's see, two proposals, yeah. Authorize city manager to sign the two proposals for Bridge Design Services in the best interest of the city. Motion? Thank you.
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions?
This is a cool engineering class as well. The next class after this would be the actual structure.
That's my understanding. My understanding is this will get us to the point to be able to go out to bid. We will then bring back to you all the bid results, which will be the construction. I would expect there will be some engineering at that time for inspection processes during construction. But yes, my understanding is this is the design and engineering to get us to go out to bid.
We have motion and support. Any other questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall.
Yes.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes, and city attorney Colleen just mentioned that probably there would be a contract. Actually, this is a proposal, and it would be a contract that we're going to negotiate. Next item, communication options for bond-funded projects.
Yes, thank you. So in response to some resident feedback and some conversations with many of you following the Metronet fiber installation and the Wallace and Thirty-First watering project, we've been exploring some ways to enhance communication with the community regarding some of the upcoming bond-funded projects. This has been kind of a common trend in our industry due to changing community expectations and the emphasis that's being put on communication. So more local governments are taking the lead on these projects, rather than in the past, we've seen a lot more relying on the contractors for that communication. However, doing so requires communication expertise and capacity. So to support this effort and to try to create the opportunity for us to have a little bit of a discussion tonight on what we would like to see, I asked SABO PR to put a proposal together outlining some communication options for the upcoming bond-funded projects, starting specifically with the community-wide water meter replacement planned for spring twenty-twenty-six. The other two water main replacement projects that will be first on the docket that are going to be quite impactful are on Fortieth and Canal. So those are two major thoroughfares in our community that will obviously not only impact neighbors, but people trying to get around it in our community. So those are kind of some of those first projects that we're just trying to think through how we can be better at communicating not only what's coming, but the impacts for our community. So ultimately, not looking for any action this evening, but just want to request some input from the council on, is this something you all are interested in? Are some of the options proposed by SABO something you would like to see implemented? Do we want to keep doing it how we've done it in the past? Do we want to try some of these things? And just look for some input so staff can continue to work on refining our plan for these upcoming projects. So before I end, just want to highlight that I appreciated how they put together this memo, almost looking at more of a menu of options, you know, things like website design, FAQs, direct mailings, you know, the idea of hosting open house presentations in neighborhoods, for neighborhoods that will be particularly impacted by these projects, some social media strategy, and so on and so forth. You know, I would tell you at this point in time, because we're not looking for any action, don't think as much about the cost, but really looking right now more on input on, is this something you think the community would benefit from? Is this something you want to try? My understanding is for some other large-scale projects in the community, we've done things like this, I think Matt was telling me before, when the Chicago Drive street state project took place, oh, a decade ago or so, that there was some additional communication support that was brought in for that project. But just thinking based on some of the feedback we've received, that is this something we want to try for some of these, you know, bond-funded projects? Understanding we bonded for almost ten million dollars, that's going to be a lot of money put back into our community. Do we want some additional communications help to try to make our messages clear and direct as possible, so people know what's going to be coming? But I'll leave it there, just looking for some, I guess, thoughts or input on, is this something we want to try or not?
Well, our experience just recently with some construction projects we had, it seems like some of the neighbors, their frustration was not so much the project or that it tore up their lawn, but like, I didn't know they were coming today, or I didn't know when they were going to be back. So just in kind of general, I think it's a great idea, you probably can't communicate too much. So that's just my general feeling.
We definitely heard the feedback from people, and we're just trying to bring some options to you all on how to learn from those experiences and try to be better.
I think we can do a better job, and we've kind of, as my understanding, we've kind of relied on contractors to do the work.
That has been the city's past practice.
And so I think we can do better by maybe doing it ourselves. That's just my thought. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I think if we can keep some of the messaging in-house, then we'll have more control over what's communicated, and how, and so forth, than relying on the contractor. In some cases, they've done a good job, in other cases, they haven't. Even with the same contractor, I've heard sometimes, you know, there's been good communication in some neighborhoods, and not so much in other neighborhoods about the same project. You know, for example, some of the right-of-way construction projects that have been going on, but... But I think the, the tactics, I mean, this is probably kind of a, a list of options and tactics that they've used or that they have available to use. I don't know that you use all of them for every project. Certain ones probably seem more appropriate or tailored to certain types of projects. Like, for example, when we do the watering project in a neighborhood, the street's torn up for months and, you know, there's pretty significant impact to property owners with access to driveways and things like that. Maybe an open house presentation would be a good option where you can have a, a neighborhood meeting and you can get, you know, people that live there together to answer questions, explain the project and so forth. You won't get everybody, but it gives people an opportunity to discuss it a little more and get their questions answered, you know, kind of from the get-go. Whereas other things, you know, we, we've used the utility bill mailers. We're already sending a utility bill out and including some additional information. You know, that gets out to everybody, every house that pays a utility bill has an opportunity to get that information. Some things are really helpful to do it that way. That really doesn't add a lot of cost when you are combining the postage and stuff. Um, also think we have an opportunity with our website. I mean, we could create a sub-page somewhere that under Public Works or even a link from the homepage like, you know, project, citygrandville.com backslash projects or something where it's easy to remember and easy for people to go and find out what's going on. We could just update that, you know, annually or, you know, over the course of the construction season when different projects are going on, at least as a, a starting point for people. So I like what they have to suggest here. Uh, I think we just need to be strategic about what we do, where and when, and maybe get some input from them on, you know, based on kind of the type of project we're looking at, what would be the most effective tactics. We've got social media on here, we've got, um, I'm not sure about the photography and the press releases, but I mean, those are options as well. But I think getting people from different angles and giving different options for communication is going to be what's most impactful. Because not everybody wants to, wants to receive communication the same way or digest information the same way. So getting it from a variety of angles, I think is probably our, our best option as well.
Jason.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I, I agree, communication is key, you know, especially with rising utility rates and, you know, here in West Michigan, rising water bills are a hot topic. One of, one of the things that is at risk of happening is some of these end-of-life meters can be underreporting volumes, so people may see bills go up. It may be more accurate, better for the city, but they may see a cost increase.
Unfortunately, I can almost say for certain that, that will happen in some cases.
We need to educate and get out in front of that, I think.
Yeah, I was going to say that too, that there has been a lot of chatter already among people in the community and neighboring communities about water rate increases because everybody in the area has been experiencing them. I think we did send something out in the newsletter about that, maybe a quarter or so ago, but that's going to be an ongoing communication, I think. And then also kind of dispelling some rumors and things that might be out there too. Like, that would be something for them to maybe go and do a, a little environmental scan of what chatter's already going on out there and how can we sort of mid-bust or, you know, get the right information out there, explain to people what's going on.
Chair.
Yeah, um, the name Sabo, Griffin, have we used them before on, uh?
Yeah, so Sabo PR is the same firm, yeah, absolutely, is the same firm who is, um, wrapping up the, uh, communication strategy light. And then we've also already going to be working with them on a crisis communi-, a crisis communication plan.
Yeah.
Um, and I, oh, that was maybe five or six months ago that was approved by council, but that's probably where you recognized that, that name. And they're a, they're a, a Grand Rapids-based PR firm that really specializes in working with public organizations. So this type of work is, is what they do.
Yeah, no, I thought it was great. Um, I liked the a la carte menu, I don't think many who adopt all, um, I was bummed that number ten wasn't carrier pigeon, you know, to send out messages to the community.
Yeah, camp, camp phone, right?
But I do think that this is a great, a great list. Uh, as Josh was saying, you know, everybody, everybody gets their information in a different way. And so I think if we can get the majority, um, especially under the circumstances we've heard with some of our projects recently, this is going to be, going to be key to kind of just head that off. And, and not necessarily head it off in a bad way, but head it off in a good way to say that here's what's coming, here's what to expect. And if you have questions, come on and talk to us, that's fine. Um, but I, I love this, this is great.
Thank you all. Yeah, I very much appreciate the feedback. I'll work to, um, kind of refine something and see if we'll bring it back for approval here. Because, yeah, the idea is if we're going to be starting, um, water meters, you know, in spring of twenty twenty-six, we're going to likely want to start messaging the beginning of twenty twenty-six. So likely in the next meeting or so, I will try to bring something back. And if you all have some more thoughts, please let me know. The, um, next item on the agenda is in regard to city council committee appointments. Um, since the last meeting, I've been asked, uh, by a few of you of when we would have the opportunity to discuss this. Uh, my understanding is, uh, Mayor Moss normally finalizes these appointments after providing time, um, from input for all of you. So just to try to support that process, put it on the agenda. Um, I don't know if you all would like to have some time to speak on it here this evening or if you all want to have one-on-one conversations with the mayor, but just wanted to make sure you all had a space on the agenda if there were some discussions that we had.
I think I talked to everybody or texted or communicated one way or another. And so, I mean, I kind of, I have a tentative list. I did have a couple of questions and maybe this is a city attorney, um, question. Couple of our, uh, city council members are like, uh, are on the zoning board appeals, for example. And is that allowed? I mean, we don't have a city council representative to the ZBA. Is there any issue with a couple of council members happen to be on the ZBA as well? That was a question I had.
It's a good question. I know that you, certainly it's, it's common to have a liaison. I don't know whether you can have more than one, I'll have to check on that.
That would be great. Because I remember when I was on planning commission and I think JR was on planning commission, there was some question about whether both of us, so then I got off planning commission, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that maybe.
I don't know.
That may be an issue.
So I, I have tentative assignments and I think I talked to everybody about that. A, a couple of them, like the W C E T TV board, I don't know what, what the future of that is.
I would anticipate that board is winding down. So it'll be important to have a representative to work through, um, probably the next six months or so of process. Um, but I don't anticipate that'll be a long-term assignment. I know Tim's been, uh, involved in that with me over the last year or so, but I don't know what the interest is there.
So I, I think I've got an input from everybody. I need to talk to Josh yet about, um, like the board of, uh, uh, the business relations committee. And so we're, we're close.
Perfect, yeah.
We've got two meetings coming up and.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem. And I know we'll put it on there for approval when you're, when you're ready. I didn't know if anyone else on council wanted to have more discussion about that, but otherwise I just have a few other notes to share and I'll be done for the evening.
Okay. John, did you?
Well, I just, I just noticed, um, if any of these are previous council assignments, the July Work Committee no longer exists.
Correct.
Correct.
And then Paul can continue serving on the air with the transit partnership.
Yeah, I think he goes through next.
So you don't necessarily need somebody to take that responsibility.
Not yet.
And he may want to continue to be a citizen representative as well, right?
Yeah.
Are there any other, I mean, we had talked earlier about, um, looking at all of our boards and commissions. Are there any other ones that are new that are in the, I mean, there were several other committees, I think, that we were looking at possibly collapsing or combining or reworking. We had that discussion previously, but I don't know that will really impact this at this point.
Yeah, when we brought, um, kind of that summary list that staff compiled, there wasn't a lot of discussion at, at that time. So I'm not quite sure where, if anywhere, the council's wanting to go. But happy to bring that back at a future meeting if there's more discussion you all would like to have. Perfect. Few other, um, announcements or kind of updates I'd like to share. You know, first one, um, I want to apologize for a typo in my project update. Um, it said Mill Race Park. There was a community survey that was live until the end of the month. Uh, that was supposed to be Indian Mountains Drive. Um, there's a little more information included in your, in your memo. So I apologize for, um, the confusion there. Um, hopefully now that we're under construction for Mill Race Park, you all realize we, we, we're not at the point for more input on that one. Um, the CSX railroad repairs that were originally planned for last Friday, um, they got delayed. My understanding is they started and didn't get a whole lot done on Friday and we were told this morning, uh, that they will be back tomorrow. So unfortunately, it's a little bit of a last, uh, a, a late-nogus reminder, but just want to apologize for anybody listening or anyone here. Uh, please stay clear of, uh, that crossing and there may be some detours. I do think they got some signage up today, so hopefully people saw that. But, um, as I normally say, hopefully a short-term inconvenience for a, a longer-term benefit with making some, uh, improvements to that, uh, that terrible crossing. Um, the fire department and the police department partnered with the schools and a number of other, uh, community organizations on Saturday to host, uh, a community food drive. Um, just want to thank both Chief Wild and Chief Anglom for all of their time and their staff's, uh, uh, time contributing to that. My understanding is, uh, we ultimately raised over, or about six police Yukons full of food donations and just over, uh, eighteen hundred dollars in donated cash and gift cards. So hopefully that'll make a difference, um, in the community in terms of those who, uh, maybe need some food assistance. So just want to very much thank both the police department and the fire department for all the time they volunteered, um, on Saturday for that. It was also pretty neat, if anyone stopped by, they had a sticker war going on uh, because they both have stickers and if a little kid wants up and wants one, don't worry, they got to get a second one because they can't pick favorites.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then lastly, just want to make a reminder, um, that Thanksgiving is this week. Wanted to say, you know, happy Thanksgiving to all of you, um, and your families. Uh, because of that, uh, city hall will be closed on Wednesday starting at five PM through, uh, Thursday and Friday, uh, for the Thanksgiving holiday. And we will be back open, uh, normal hours, uh, next week, Monday. Um, so we've got announcements put up on the website, on, on the doors, but if anyone needs assistance prior to them, please let us know and we'll work to get any business done prior to the holiday. Those are all the announcements I have. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Griffin? Great. Something I don't usually do, but I noticed we've got quite a few guests tonight. And so I'm just going to open up, um, opportunity for public comment, brief public comment one more time. Anybody here, you sat through the whole meeting? Mr. Cobb.
Thanks for coming back, we missed you.
Uh, thank you, it's good to be back. Anybody else? Last call.
I would like to welcome in new council members. Congratulations and congratulations to Andy for being elected and thanks for serving. I guess.
Okay, council member comments? Gerald, let's start with you tonight.
Well, let me start with me because I have a lot to talk about and I don't want Josh to talk about it all before, uh, my, my guests to talk about it. But, uh, no, I just want to say, you know, Thanksgiving, this is a great week coming up. Um, it's, it's one of my favorite holidays, so thanks for, for mentioning that, Griffin. Uh, to everybody here, I hope you have a great time with your family. The following weekend is Christmas, Christmas at the Commons. Um, I love that event as well. I cannot be here, uh, but for those of you that are willing to serve, that's a great time as well. Steve, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you for, um, not making me, um, execute my mayor portent. Do these while you were gone, so thank you for that. Um, and then, um, I did get a chance to thank Paul and Justin in person. I sent them a message, but just, uh, Paul and Justin served some great time here on the council and they, they will be missed. They added some great value over the time. But I'm also excited to, to welcome and to congratulate Jason and Mike to your, to your seats. I'm, I'm excited to work with you and to push our, our, our city forward in all that we do. And the last question, Charlie, I know this is a weird question, but my neighbor who has more money than he knows what to do with has a question of how much that sidewalk plow might go for at the, at the auction. I'm not kidding, man.
I have no idea. I mean, I put anywhere from twenty to fifty thousand.
Okay. Uh, he has a lot of money. I don't know if he has that much money for a sidewalk plow to plow his and my sidewalks, but.
Typically, what people who look, bet on that are, like Wyoming contracts out on the sidewalks and those contractors usually will throw money at it.
Sounds good.
If he's willing to throw money, go ahead.
Well, I welcome the, the opportunity for new equipment in our, in our city and, and thank you for all you do there. Um, that's it.
Mike.
Welcome back, Steve.
Thank you.
Best wishes on a speedy recovery.
Thanks.
Um, I saw the, uh, police department and fire department at Meyer, uh, when I shopped on Saturday. Um, thank you to both your departments for sponsoring the, uh, community food drive along with Grandville Public Schools and other leaders in our community. That's great, uh, this time of year to make sure families have what they need for a, for a great Thanksgiving. Uh, my daughter grabbed the police department stickers, so we'll have to grab the fire department stickers. Just want to wish, uh, council members and staff happy Thanksgiving and look forward to joining at, uh, Christmas at the Commons.
Josh.
Yeah, welcome back, Steve. We've had you doing well. It's good to see you here again.
Thank you for your visit.
You're welcome. It was a pleasure to see you.
It's good to see you too. And your, and kind of your, your.
My element, yes. So kind of along those lines, I guess, I just, I, I don't know if I've seen this in a packet before, but, um, I wanted to just mention that we have a community blood drive coming up, uh, November twenty-eighth on Friday. It's from ten to two at the library, um, in the, in the community room in the Commons. Um, and everybody that attempts to donate will get a twenty-five dollar gift card. So, um, I try to donate blood as often as I can. I'm a universal donor, so they call me all the time to donate. Um, I just was there a couple of weeks ago, so I can't go on Friday again because I kind of, it hasn't been long enough yet, but we actually also have, so this is a great opportunity. If you literally like to give part of yourself to the community, you can do that through the blood drive and there's always a lot of people in need of, um, blood donations, especially our local hospitals, um, and blood centers do. Um, but we actually have a, we, this is through Brucity, which is our local blood center for Michigan. Uh, but we actually do have a community blood center here in Grandville all the time over at the United Baptist Church right across the street. And they have weekly blood drives. So if you can't make it on Friday, but you're interested in donating, then go online, look for their hours, but I think pretty much every Saturday they're open and they have availability. What's that?
Almost all week they're open.
All week during the week as well, yeah. They have kind of permanent space in the basement of the, the church over there. So I've gone over there a couple of times. They're really a lot of fun and you also get snacks after you donate. You get cookies and chips and all kinds of stuff. So, uh, it's a great, uh, great way to, to help out in the community. Um, I also wanted to just say thanks, um, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve with all of you, to be part of this community. I'm thankful for all of our dedicated public servants, our, our staff, our volunteers, um, all of you that sit around the table here and all of our residents. And we have, really have some wonderful residents and wonderful businesses and organizations in our community that are so generous and giving and, you know, really care a lot about each other. That's part of what is wonderful about living in a small town, relatively small town like Grandville. So I'm thankful for all of those things. That's it.
Thanks. Ray.
Well, it's good to see you back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Looking good and I'm sure that's quite an ordeal, so.
Feel good.
It's something most of us hope we never had to do. But with that said, I'm back from vacation, but more importantly, I'm back on city council. So I just want to thank everybody in the community and who support me, uh, going door-to-door. As to how long, people ask me, how long has it been? And I really don't know because I was appointed when Bob DeWitt passed away. But it's got to be nineteen, twenty years, something like that. So it's an honor to be back and it's, uh, an honor to have the community support and I look forward to serving as best I can. Well, I just want to wish everybody a happy and blessed Thanksgiving and after you travel for a while and you're out on the boat, you come back and you say, yep, there really is something special and unique and great about Grandville. It's just good to be home, so. Thanks.
Jason.
Just a couple of quick things. I did want to say I'm usually a fan of like digital materials, but having the financial report and a bone copy was very nice. Appreciate that and probably think I'm being sarcastic, but I had a great time reading that this weekend. Another thing, Griffin, I put in the packet on the, uh, dear management report, it was very interesting. It was nice to see, you know, one of the recommendations for our area is native plants. Um, so it's nice to see some of the work we're doing across the city impacting one-on-one, one-on-one initiative. Uh, the other thing you mentioned earlier, the Indian Mountain survey, encourage everybody to take some time and provide your feedback. I was fortunate enough to be a part of early conversations for that and I think it's a, area Mercedes tremendous potential. Um, you know, this effort might, might unlock that, so. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving too. We have much to be thankful for. Also looking forward to Christmas at the Commons, uh, week from Saturday. That should be a lot of fun. I know Kyle's going to have a float there, which is going to be. I know Kyle's gonna have a float there, which is gonna be, it's gonna be amazing. And lots of other fun things too. So with that, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And is there a motion to return?
So, support.
Motion support. Discussion, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, if you please say yes. Thanks, have a good evening, everybody.